Okay, so Francis, let's start with you.
Okay. I'm going to be like God, you can, you cannot see him, but you can hear him. Yeah, anyway, we had our last meeting, the board meeting on Tuesday, May 26th. It was a virtual meeting, I think that's the first meeting in quite a while, given this crazy pandemic that's going on. Now, before I go to the substance of the points I want to raise, let me just get out of the way a couple of housekeeping matters that may be of interest to you. One is that all the board members, staff members, and hopefully their families and loved ones are holding up well, to the best of my knowledge, in this crazy period we're in. There's not been any reports of any fatalities or deaths or sickness, serious sickness, so that's good to know. You know that the libraries have been closed because of that, so most of the staff of WLS have been working from home. I must say that, and the board has been very impressed that this library staff have displayed an impressive devotion to duty, displaying a spirit of resourcefulness, creativity, et cetera. And there's not been any reports or acts on their part. And I know, and another thing is that there's not been any layoffs of any staff. This is a matter that is very close to the hearts of this board, as we all know.
You, but nobody else now.
Hello?
Yeah, Francis, Dan was able to turn himself on.
I'm, I'm, I'm working on this right now, just, I'm listening.
Okay, Dan, I can see you.
The process here, I got you guys, I got you guys.
Okay, go ahead, Francis, I'm sorry.
That's okay, it's good to see you, Dan. All right, then the second point is that the board approved an amount of $565,000 in federal payroll protection loan from, from the, from the government. This, as I understand it, is a forgivable loan for salaries, rents, et cetera. Don't ask me too many details about it, I think the central issue here is that the salaries of our staff, at least, are guaranteed, that's the essential point. And the third housekeeping matter is that for about three years, I think now, the WLS has been extended a line of credit of half a million dollars from a Toronto Dominion Bank. And this is interest-free, et cetera, it's, it's a line of credit facility, really. So, we were requested whether we would like to extend this facility again, since it has been offered, because the current one expires at the end of June this month. So the board unanimously approved the extension of this, of this line of credit. Some board members were not very happy about it, they felt this was unnecessary, why get this facility if you're not going to use it, and if you use it, what is the implication? But I didn't agree with that, I think these facilities like cash in the back pocket, it is there, you can use it if you need it, if you don't, then you don't use it. And, and given that there are no encumbrances, covenants, or facility fees, and due to the uncertainty of our budget and the money coming from the state and the local government, it is recommended that this borrowing facility should be accepted, so that was accepted. These are the three for housekeeping matters that might be of interest to you. Now, the board has been preoccupied with a number of issues. One, of course, because of the COVID-19 virus. The board has been focusing mainly on that, the impact of this virus on libraries and their staff, their operations, their security, relations with patrons, that has been the main, the main focus of, of the board. Other activities have virtually been put on hold or really significantly slowed down, the case point is.
Give me Francis, you can turn on your video now.
Me?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Corey, you can as well.
Okay. Oh, there we are. Ah, magic. Yeah, I'm talking to you from the Caribbean somewhere, yeah. Anyway, so the, what was I saying, the major activities that the WLS has been engaging, has sort of been put on hold or significantly slowed down, what I have in mind is this migration to Evergreen, and the attending issues and problems, that, that has been significantly slowed down. And of course, our preoccupation with the IT audit report, EDI, and network, and help us, this has sort of been not discontinued, but significantly slowed down because of our preoccupation with the, with the pandemic. But, right, right now, because of the relaxation or the move to phase two, the main occupation, the main focus of attention for the board has been the issues of reopening the libraries. Now, our 38 libraries have been in varying degrees, been involved with the reopening, and with all the problems that, that go with it, grappling with the issues of health and legal problems, safety problems, organizational problems, delivery problems, and, and everything else. That has been the main concern of the board, and the board has been encouraging this WLS staff and the executive director and so on to provide all the necessary support as much that it can to, to the library to cope with this. The libraries are handling the reopening issue, of course, in, in different degrees. A library like our own, which is progressive and innovative, is out there doing all kinds of initiatives and keeping the patrons engaged very, very remarkably. There are the libraries, like Doves Ferry, for example, which are very conservative, they are very reluctant to, to begin business, they're very cautious about this the health and the legal problems involved in reopening, et cetera, et cetera. But I have to say that the PLDA has been extremely and impressively engaged with this, they've been meeting every week. They meet every Thursday at 9:30, they met this morning, to continue their discussions about the reopening. Basically exchanging experiences and methods and approaches and difficulties and helping each other out. And that has been quite, quite impressive, the exchanges between the, the directors about the kinds of problems that they face. And it looks to me that as, as time goes on, slowly, slowly, many of these legal healths and other issues will be will progressively be cleared and the air will, will clear, and then I think the, the library should be able to reasonably return to a normal mode of operations, to the satisfaction of their, of their patrons. Let me leave it at that, there's so many other little things that I could say, but it's probably not necessary at the moment.
Thank you. Have I, oh, I'm not muted, thank you. And Tom is going to follow up with any kind of information on the opening, how it went, and et cetera, et cetera.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Okay. So President's Report, I see there I have a resolution, which resolution is this? I have one thing I'm going to talk about, but Tom, which resolution is that?
Deirdre, it was a request by the foundation to approve of three sitting foundation board members whose terms are expiring this month. They would ask the board to vote for their renewal for an additional three years.
Did we, so we received that like a while, two weeks ago, right?
Right, I shared it with you.
Yep, do you remember the names of the people, so I can tell the board members?
Of course, it's March Bliss, Michael Rosenthal, and Heather Brown.
Okay. That's fine, that's fine. One of those people is not as kind of healthy as, as the other, but we can.
Well, no, I know.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure the wisdom behind that, but. So I might make a mo, so I'm going to talk about other stuff, but I will do this first, I make a motion to approve the three board members who are actually just re-upping their terms on the foundation board. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Jean, are you, Jessica, is somebody taking notes out there, in the attendees?
I think Jean is, Jean has been doing it in the past, has done a fine job, and I believe she's in attendance tonight and taking notes. Yep, she says I am.
I am, okay, thank you. Okay, so, um, I wanted to bring up an issue that has come up, which Tom and I talked about, and Daniel was part of it too. It's the issue of us voting on the ballot, now, this is actually for us moving forward, it's not a discussion for this year, but there was a question, which I thought was a fair question, why isn't our, our budget on the ballot? This year it wasn't on the ballot, we are actually not, we don't have to put it on the ballot if we don't change it. Really, it's not a change to the budget, so they wouldn't be approving anything, however, it is still their money. And so, you know, it's the taxpayers' money, and, you know, they have a right to have a say with it. So I wanted to bring up the topic of whether, moving forward, we should always just put it on regardless of whether there's an increase or not, and I wanted to get your thoughts on it, I can give you mine after we kind of discuss it. But, and this would be for next year, moving on, but why don't we discuss?
I mean, I think, my view would be probably, I haven't thought a lot about it, but I, I think it probably would make sense to put it on there. I think we would have to discuss separately whether it makes sense to spend money on a mailer, which I know we talked about kind of earlier this year. But, I don't know, that, that would be my two cents. I don't know what, I don't know what the harm of including it is, it's probably just better for transparency's sake.
Does anybody?
I agree with Chuck, I think the, the concern would be, as a resident, I guess, is allocation changes, right? So, let's say, I'm going to keep the same budget, but I'm moving dollars around within that budget, so the transparency gives everyone a level of comfort, which is probably, maybe why someone brought it up, because even though you're coming back at the same amount, your allocation may be 180 degrees different from last year, and I may not agree with that.
It's fair.
That's fair. Dan, do you have anything to add?
No, no, I, I agree, I think that, um, if, just putting it out there, just being an informative side, I think will be sufficient, and I think adequate enough for members of our community, just to be aware of what, what we're doing. I mean, we try, we try to be, we are as transparent as we can be, I think this, we just figured that, you know, since there was any increases or any significant changes into the amount that we're asking for taxpayers to, to contribute, you know, we just figured that we just moved forward that, but we, we would do our best our next time, hopefully this doesn't happen again, right? Knock on wood, and, and we, we will learn from our mistakes.
Whitney? Francis, was somebody going to?
No, yeah, I just wanted to ask, has there been any questions from anybody about our budget being put forward or anything? Where did you, where did you get?
Yes.
Where did you get this inspiration from, because that, that could be the, the question is the answer.
Yeah, I got a question, why isn't on the ballot?
There you are, that, that means somebody wants to see it.
I got the same question, and I just said it's not, hasn't changed, so it doesn't go on.
So, I, I must say, Tom, I got the question, but you are beloved, because some of the response was like, well, if Tom is doing it, it's okay, it's fine, it's fine. I mean, you, I just, you should know that you are quite beloved. So, there, there was a willingness to accept, I think, what we were saying, simply because Tom is there, and so while Tom's there, so I just, I wanted to let you know that, but yeah.
That's so nice, thank you, wow.
That's good.
But, but of course, I did consult with the attorney, who deals with this sort of thing, and he indicated that it wasn't necessary, but you know what, there's a public relations and a transparency issue that all the board cited, that I, I understand, and it makes sense.
Okay.
Well, but board members have voted on, isn't it?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, so then that's one reason, the board members have voted on, so what they do should also be public.
Right, I agree that it should be listed, in hindsight, it's a little bit odd that it's not, just because they're voting on, you know, who's going to be a board member, but I don't know, is it something that we should put in place with a policy?
Yeah, I think we should, because.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm going to recommend that we approve our, I guess, how does this work? If we make it a policy, do I send it to the policy committee then to come up with a policy?
Yes, and then we will create a policy.
Sure, so, um, I, I'm gonna, I'd like to vote on it, so it's kind of in the record, that we are actually sending it to the policy committee with the recommendation from the full board that, that it be on the ballots going forward. So I'd like to make a motion, everybody, I'd like to make a motion that.
Would you like to give a reason for that in, in the motion? Is it transparency, this and that and the other?
Yep.
All right.
So I'd like to make a motion that the policy committee come up with a policy that recognizes that our budget should be on the ballot. All those in favor? Oh, no, 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 can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
I'm on the policy committee, but.
So, I, I think there's only two of you on the policy committee right now?
Sarah and I, right now.
And so I think that's fine, until we kind of figure out who's going to be on the board, which is going to be a long time. I, I'm okay with the two of you sitting down and doing it, are you okay with that?
Yeah, we'll be fine.
Can I suggest then that there was also the, the language needed to be tweaked on kind of how we bring people in when there's a, when there is a vacancy because someone steps down?
Yeah, Sarah, let's look at that again, that's a good idea, we'll just, we'll make it crystal clear, yep. We can look back at those emails.
Okay, okay. That's all I have. Tom?
Tom, you're on mute.
You're on mute, start over.
All right, sorry, I'm live and loud again. Just to highlight what everyone knows, we are in the process of voting on our trustees due to a storyline that I'm not sure I can really retell in adequate detail. The election is still ongoing for our trustees, both for the library and for the school district, as well as the school district budget. All absentee ballots must be received by the school district clerk via mail by 5:00 PM on June 16th. The hand-delivered mail deadline is over, it was June 9th. So we are waiting for a decision relative to our trustees, and I would encourage everybody out there, if you have not voted, please do so. So that's, so that's that. Even, we are now in the building, staff, but our statistics really reflect what we're doing virtually. And at the last monthly meeting, I shared with you folks some of the really astounding and positive activity levels related to our social media, and for example, we have two Twitter accounts, and the, and the in terms of the impressions, we went from January 20th of 452, now to 1,024. We went for our other Twitter account, we're at 9,700 on January 20th. As of May 20th, we were 21,100. So, you know, lots of people are accessing the Twitter accounts, which is being contributed by our social media staff, Nikki Fudge, who's doing a fantastic job, and our staff who are pretty ascending content to Nikki. So good show all the way around, our Instagram also, extremely popular, again, using as a comparison, January 20th, we had 1,154 impressions, as of May 20th, we were up to 10,059. So, again, lots of activity levels. Our Facebook NRPL page, we reached 8,566 connections on January 20th. We're now up to 32,172. It's really impressive. You know, our weekly email blasts are going out through constant contact, and in terms of email sent on January 20th, it was 52,091, as of May 20th, 82,764. So we are seeing just tremendous activity, and it's really a, a team effort by the library staff with Nikki and Barbara Davis, as well as our staff from all areas, so they're doing a great job, and it's wonderful. One thing that we, I had shared with you folks, was a survey that we put together, asking people about their point of view relative to the reopening of the library, their concerns in the aftermath of our brush with this pandemic. And we've, we've gotten a fair amount of responses to date, we're hoping for more, especially once the city and the school district forwards it, we've had 43 responses, and from seniors, 32%, mostly adults at 60%, teens at 23%. So we're just, we're seeing all kinds of activities from different demographics. In terms of the sorts of things that people are interested in, by far, people are concerned about isolation from friends and family, then employment status, and then food security. So that is really, a really major issue. Another age group issue in terms of question are challenges, and people are saying education challenges, which was nearly 50%, then employment status, then again, food security. There's all sorts of additional questions to ask people about how they engage with our remote programming, our e-resources, how they learned about our services, our e-resources, what are the things that are people are most concerned about? I think this is interesting, first of all, they're interested, once we reopen, about social distancing. Then, that's by far the most important issue for them, then information about how we're cleaning, and, or you know, how often. They want to know that we have hand sanitizer, they want to know about the rules that we will put in place for our patrons, so that we can ensure general public safety, they want to know about staff, staff safety. And last but not least, they want to know about circulating materials. And we asked them what services they wanted, they're very interested in our curbside service, which will begin on Monday, June 15th. They're interested in curbside pickup of, of items that they're emailing to us, things that we're printing off. They're equally interested in our home delivery of circulation materials. You know, people are saying, we asked, what do you miss most about the library being open? People said they're missing the ability to browse in the stacks. And we've done this in English and Spanish, our Spanish responses are 18 in number. We would love to get more responses about our survey, if you folks, as board members, could send to your group, that would be great. We need, with the input we get from our residents, it will help us craft the sorts of services that we provide, and the sorts of sensitivities that we need to be aware of, as we work towards someday reopening the building to our, our residents, so.
Can I ask a very?
Yeah.
Can I just ask a super quick question? When you said 18 surveys, I think had been in, in Spanish language, was that 18 out of the 40 that you mentioned?
Separate.
Okay, so it's in addition to, okay.
Right.
So there's been, so there's, so there's been like 40 plus 18-ish?
Right, right, it's been over 60, which is not a lot, but.
Well, but it's a start.
It is a start, and the, our, our, our residents, our great patrons and supporters, know that we want to know what they want, what are their concerns, so we can provide them, so we can address them, and our staff is really anxious about making certain that we're, we're curating the right, you know, activity levels and products and safety, safety measures, so that when people come back to the library, they'll feel safe. We want to, we want to be safe, we want them to feel safe too. So, so it's, it's a good thing. Just to talk about our foundation, which tonight simultaneously is having a cocktails and conversation event, we're sorry, we're missing it, there was a sort of, there was not communication.
You're muted.
Yeah, Tom, this must be like the third or fourth time they had one of those when we're having our meeting. And, and frankly, we only have them like once a month, there's all, there's other, there's three other Thursdays in a month, so I mean, I can talk to, I can talk to.
And four other days in the week, too.
Right, right, so, but it seems odd to me that they would continue to have them and not really consider at all the trustees attending.
I agree, I agree.
I don't, I don't, I don't get that.
I agree, but I think we should, I think we should just be mindful that they are very generous to us, and we should just be, in the way that we approach, be I, I agree that, that we should be able to do better on it.
To approach it in the way that you think it's best.
I'm happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
Could invite them to come to our meetings too, in the, in the process.
Absolutely. And, but our foundation, as Chuck said, you know, despite this, this unfortunate conflict, they, they, they continue to provide us with financial support and advocacy that is so important. Their latest effort is, I think maybe, maybe formally kicking off tonight, and it's a fundraising effort that relates to the library and the aftermath of this pandemic. And they went to us and asked us what, what we needed, we of course have a flat budget, and my department heads consulted with their staff, we put it all together and shared with them, so they're working on raising quite a bit of money for us to help us serve our public and, and kind of close that gap between what we can afford and what we want to provide. They're looking to help us with extra sponsorship for Wi-Fi hotspots, closing our digital divide, which is such a major dramatic problematic issue in this community and many others. They're looking to help us purchase extra copies for the high school summer reading, which the high school librarian asked us to do, and of course, we're trying to do so. They're helping, they're hoping to raise money to provide, provide us with extra resources, so we can enhance our employment counseling and benefit counseling for our residents who are struggling, you know, finding work in, in this new world. They're also going to be helping us with keeping the new electronic resources that we acquired during this pandemic. You know, The New York Times, Acorn TV, continue to provide great titles in Overdrive for ebook and e-audio. And they're, we're, they're, we're asking them to help us purchase student and learning-based databases that will help teachers and parents with their kids. So, you know, you know, they're really terrific, they're stepping up to bat to help us at a time when we really could use this extra financial support, so I'm happy to report on that. And just as an aspect to, even though the summer's not going to be the way we'd like it, one thing that I'm happy to report is that our summer reading program for kids is not going to stop, it's going to continue, it's been popular for years and years and years. And it's going to begin on July 6th, and it will end on August 28th. Now, it'll be different, but it's, we think it's going to be terrific. And the, the, this year's theme is Imagine Your Story, the Summer Reading Challenge. And we will be using a Read Squared, a great online resource, that most of the libraries in New York will be using, because the state purchased a license for us, and so we will students and families can download the app and, and set up an account, and the idea is that the end of the summer, each student, each participant will have achieved 100 points. And with that in mind, we will be setting up a configuration, it's different, but it'll be outside the library in the Memorial Highway entrance. It's different, but it'll be outside the library in the Memorial Highway entrance, where Monday, Wednesday and Friday, people can stop by either morning or afternoon to pick up books and pick up on other sort of inducements to continue to read during, during, during the summertime. And we're also going to be providing something called a summer program pick-me-ups. It's basically a craft effort and it'll allow our, our children to have a bag with craft projects so that they can do that with themselves, their friends and with their family. So that will continue. And the pickup time for the crafts and the prizes will be again, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, usually two hour chunks. So the summer is different, but we will continue to push reading and the love of reading for our young people.
Did you talk, did you talk about R X R grant?
Yep, that's my next one.
Okay, sorry.
No, that's okay. So as Deidre asked, you know, we recognize that there is a digital divide in the city of New Rochelle, like so many other communities. And we'd been working towards trying to close that gap prior to this pandemic. However, with the onset of the pandemic, it made it even more important. So we've had conversations amongst ourselves with Deidre and Daniel Bonet amongst the staff and with a provider. So our goal is to provide 90 Wi-Fi hotspots for children and families who do not have internet service in the community. The school district told us that there are over 600 families that are in this position and they've agreed that they will help us with this effort. They'll give us the information, the families that we can provide these units. It will cost a fair amount of money, over $60,000. And I'm happy to say that we started out small and have gotten grants and we're hoping to land a big grant in the near future. We've received $2,000 from the Westchester Library System COVID-19 Mini Grant Program. Our great foundation gave us over $10,000 towards this. And now we're waiting on a response from R X R through their, through the foundation they're working with, in which we're asking for $50,000. So with, with that money, that will give us the 90 units that we will be able to purchase. We will distribute to families with New Rochelle School District assistance. And each, each device will allow up to 15 users in a household or adjacent area to, to use it. And it's unlimited and it's 24/7. And it will be for the duration of a two-year time period. And we're excited about it.
How long does a family get the hotspot?
You know, we have to, we have to decide that in tandem with the school district. It could be for, it could be for a few months. It could be for, you know, essentially a semester. It could be for the year, it could be longer. New York Public has been doing this for a while. And what they do is they give it to families on an annual basis. And it's been very successful. We might want to use that model. But it, it, this, this approach has been demonstrated successfully elsewhere in New York State. Poughkeepsie Public Library cooperated with their school district and placed 50 Wi-Fi units for families also suffering from the lack of internet. And that was successful. We've spoken with the Poughkeepsie folks and they characterized it as a great collaboration between their library and between their school district. We're hoping to see something similar.
Is that just for, for the family or can a group of families get together and utilize that facility so that, you know?
I think it's really, that's a good question, Francis. I think it really relates to the families. The nice thing is that the internet access will allow up to 15 devices. So, you know, families could get together and allow additional people, maybe a group of students coming together in someone's home or in their yard to access it. It's really depends upon the recipient. We've submitted this to R X R. It was done on Tuesday. And of course, it's Thursday, no answer yet, no surprise, but we're keeping our fingers crossed.
A question for you, Tom, really quickly. What were the conditions of the grant? Significant, major conditions, maybe a lot.
There's, it's very, and Daniel can speak to it because he was able to obtain a $50,000 grant for his organization. But as I read the document, Daniel, there's, it's, 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 it does not include a lot of red tape or conditions. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. The conditions are very, for lack of a better term, lax, if you will. But overall, I, you know, they would, they will be asking for a report. They usually ask one mid-year and then towards the end of the year, you know? And as far as a quick narrative, if you will, probably a paragraph or two of what's going on, what's been the impact. But most importantly, one of the major reports will be a fiscal report as far as where, what have you spent so far, mid-year, at the end of the year, and, and so forth. But as much as information as we can give them, that reflects that their money is being put into good use would be sufficient for them. They're very open, open-ended type of questions where it gives the, the organization a flexibility to give as much as information as possible. At the end of the day, they're a community foundation and we want to be in good standings with them and show that we, number one, as a, as a library and an organization, that number one, we can spend the money up to the dollar. You know, we want to make sure that we go at zero. And secondly, that their money is being put into good use and that we are being able to service not only 10 families, but within a year that we're able to service, I don't know, 50, 60 families and so forth. We want to make sure that their dollars are really being, you know, spent in a very productive and sufficient way.
You know, I talked to them, they, so Dan, like Dan said, they did that on purpose. They wanted it to be kind of a, they want the organization to be able to come back or them to go to the organization and say, what do you think about this? And they wanted to be a free, a kind of, an interactive grant application. They, they would be happy to come to us and say, can you add this? Can you take that out?
Yeah, for sure.
Not stringent at all.
Yeah, they're very, they're, they're easy, they're great people to work with. Laura Rossi, Robyn Milan, everyone out there, and even people at R X R, they're all about. And communication is key. So anything that works, what doesn't work, how can we improve it and so forth? So, yeah.
Thank you, Daniel. Yeah, no, it's.
Thank you, Daniel. Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, it's a, it's, it's a wonderful grant to land. It will directly help our community and I'm feeling optimistic. But we've started the process of purchasing, thanks to Daniel O'Gerry's good works, the, the units for the, for the money that we've already obtained, which I believe are 18. So that, that purchase order has gone out. And so we hope to get that in the near future. And if we happen to hear good news from R X R regarding our grant request, then we can put in a request for far more units. My, my next sort of element is an important element that I think people are interested in, which is what's happening in the library. But, and before I get into the particulars of our reentry plan, I do, I want to give you an overview. And the overview is that our staff is in the building. We are following the governor's precepts. So we're keeping 50% of the normal staffing in the building at any one time. And our full-time staff and just a few part-timers have been in. We are working either a series of full days or part-time days and just taking turns. And it's, it's really worked out quite well. And the things that we're doing are things that you would imagine. Cleaning up the backlog of material that was held while we were closed, checking them in, separating our books from books that need to go to other, other, other libraries. We are also picking up the backlog of books and non-print material that we ordered that we never received because we were closed. And so our tech services staff is working hard to get that into our catalog. We're also doing what the governor tells us we must do and we know we must do, which is creating an environment that's safe for the staff. We're practicing efforts that relate to keeping socially distant six feet. We have very liberally distributed all sorts of P P E equipment so that our staff has a variety of masks, we have hand sanitizer wipes, we have shields if people want that. And, and that's made people feel much, much better. We are outfitting the building, refitting it, I should say, so that someday when we reopen, we'll be ready to help people, but we'll make certain that our patrons will be in an environment that will be safe. There, you know, we're taking furniture and storing it. We're, we're taking computers offline, every other one, so that there's distance. We're looking at ways to frankly protect our keyboards so that, one idea is we may put Saran Wrap on keyboards so that when people, you know, use the public terminals, when they're done, we can remove the Saran Wrap and put new down. All sorts of interesting ideas that we're learning at the directors' meetings. And, you know, our staff has delved into the literature, which is considerable, about how other libraries are handling this. And it's both on the internet and there are webinars. And so we're all trying to figure out what's the best practice. And it's so crucial. And our, our people are really dedicated to, to making, to making that happen. We're also now in the process of getting ready to start curbside delivery as of Monday. And we have a series of times in the morning and the afternoon. And we're giving a few evening opportunities and a, and a Saturday opportunity too. So no one's left out, you know, in terms of their schedule. We've started the process of talking about delivery. And delivery will be different than our curbside, which is staff-oriented. Delivery will be, we working with our city volunteer coordinator to find volunteers in the community who are willing to deliver books to people who are seniors or medically fragile. And as you folks know, Daniel's been so involved in his job and his efforts, there are plenty of wonderful people who are willing to volunteer and to help people who are not in a position to help themselves. And so we're hoping to find volunteers to carry that forward. And our survey has shown that both curbside and delivery to, to these folks seems to be of interest to our community. So we're, we're working towards that. Our book drop has been open here at this main library since, since March 13th, when we closed. We are planning to open the H C L book drop, which had been closed because of the, because it's separate from the building and it's fairly small. It will be open on Monday, so people can start returning material then. We're looking at curbside delivery service for our, for our children's library on July 6th, when our summer reading game begins. The Westchester Library System is planning to tentatively start interlibrary loan delivery, you know, the trans, the transit between all our 38 libraries. As Francis can attest at today's meeting, it would appear July 1st. So that's a milestone that we're looking to, to, to go towards. So slowly but surely, we're moving forward in terms of providing the services that our residents can rightly expect. We're still not ready to open our building. And I can tell you, I think all but one library is not open and no one is setting a date. We're just waiting to see how we proceed forward in terms of our phases with the governor. But we're preparing ourselves mentally in our physical plant, et cetera. We're looking at things we haven't decided. We are in the process of looking at our square footage and devising numbers for people accessing the building as a whole in various spaces. We're trying to wrap our brain around the idea that we may have to give people time limits when they use the library so that a person using the library all day would be unfair because other people might be left waiting for longer periods of time. So we're working on things of that nature too. It's, it's a lot to consider. The county directors' meeting today and all the other Thursdays before, we're all sort of struggling with what to do, how to do it safely and fairly. It's, 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 it's interesting. It's a, it's an intellectual challenge and it's, but it really affects how we serve our residents.
Can I ask, has, have there been any staff members who have not wanted to return because they were concerned for their health?
We have a few staff members who have had some concerns. One staff member is able to fully work from home by the very nature of the, the position. And this person actually has been working very hard since we closed, working on projects and bringing them back. We've been ferrying them back and forth and the productivity has been excellent. That's the, that's one person. We have, we also have a part-time person. And both of those people are older in age, I guess you might say, and that's one of their concerns and might have some medical issues too. And we have another part-time person who again, has been working steadily since the door closed because we've been ferrying materials back and forth. And so it's really worked. But other than that, people are coming to work, they're, they're kind of putting on their game face and they, they want to get back into the swing of things. Our phones are now turned on. One of our reference librarians today was, was laughing because she said, it was so great to hear a patron, you know, and talk to them and set up a curbside delivery service. And, you know, our, we've been away from this for a long time and it's, and they're happy to be back as long as we continue to, you know, move carefully and cautiously.
Very good, very good.
And that's really it for me. I mean, I've talked about what we're doing, but I'm happy to answer any questions about our reentry and anything else.
I do have a question about the curbside pickup. So you had mentioned that someone had called in to schedule that. Is that the method that's?
Good.
Or?
Good question, Sarah.
I tried to reserve books through my account.
Right.
It wouldn't let me do that. So is that not how we're going to handle things for curbside?
Actually, curbside is sort of a three-pronged attack where, and I'm surprised, were they books that were owned by our library or by other libraries?
You know, I didn't even think to look. They could have been from other libraries and maybe.
If they were other libraries.
There was a lot of books that I was trying to, I was going down a long list.
Well, that might, that might explain it. But Sarah, at this point, as, as I said, I L Ls between the libraries, which has been one of the greatest assets of our consortium, it's been disabled because of this issue. And we're looking to probably turn that feature on in early July, based on today's conversation. But if you were to go in and to look to placeholders on, on material that we have here, the system should work. But, you know, not everybody is, has a computer or is computer savvy. We have distributed through our e-blast and our social media, an email address and a phone number so that if you want to have a more personal connection, your people are allowed to do that and we have been doing that. We've started a dry run of calling all the people who have had material on hold as of March 13th, when the doors shuttered. And we're getting, you know, some good responses. We started today to start distributing people, you know, it's not curbside per se, it's sort of our dry run and trying to clear our shelves and give people the material that they want. Many people want it. Some people have said, I'm sort of past that, forget about it. But, but that's how you should be able to access it, Sarah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Uh, Tom, I have another question. I think the answer is yes, but obviously the country is going through quite a lot of unrest, but also just a lot of self-reflection that's been tough. And as well as New Rochelle, is the library curating any, anything to really kind of speak to some of this stuff?
That's a great question, yeah. We've actually put it in some of our email blasts.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. We have seen that.
Yeah, I think.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, it's a great question. When, when, you know, when, you know, when this phenomena started to break, you know, we, we have a library staff that watches for current events and, you know, issues and, you know, trends. And our, our person who's really in charge of collection development said, I would like to buy. to buy material that deals with this issue, gives people the opportunity to consider the matter, you know, from different points of view, from different authors." And she put together a, what we call a cart, a print and non-print ebook of almost $1,500. And our children's library, we talked and I said, "You know, kids have questions. They don't understand this. It's confusing and it's scary." And our children's staff put together a similar cart of, I think, just over $600, $700. And our friends, I went to Amy Teaks, our friend's president, and said, "Amy, you know, this year is, coming up is pretty tight. Could you help us purchase this material?" She said, "Absolutely." So we purchased the items, thanks to the friend's financial support, and we're making them available.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I don't want to engage in any comparative analysis, but I can say that our library is very much advanced in this reopening issues compared to some of the other libraries. I sit on the PADA meeting, so I can make this observation. I know some libraries are very scared to put their foot in the water at the moment and others are having difficulties with their board, they're extremely conservative and so on. But as far as our library is concerned, I've been very impressed to see how innovative and forward-looking they have been and in serving the patrons. Particularly, I like this idea of the survey that was sent out because this is a powerful tool of gauging the feelings of the patrons about what they feel towards their libraries. I mean, they are clients after all, so they have to dictate what they want. And I think that's very positive.
Well, you know, thank you, Francis. I just have to say that this is really a team effort. And, you know, our staff has been great, but honestly, without the board being the kind of board that you are, and I'm not just saying it, I mean, I say it to my colleagues and my friends, you're incredibly supportive, you're very positive, you care about what's happening, but you're not micromanagers. And just the way you have supported the staff in various ways, it's really great. And what we've been able to do is because we've had the support of our governing body to do it, so thank you. And I mean that most sincerely. And it's, you know, I think we're very lucky. We have a great community that loves the library. We have a terrific board and we have a really good staff. I mean, nothing's perfect, but we're fortunate and, you know, all the parties.
I can endorse that because if you see the frustrations of some directors with their boards, it is, it is heartrending, you know, and we do talk to them, so.
Right, some of the directors are so anxious and plaintive in their concerns and questions and it's true, it makes me say how lucky I am as the director and in a community with a board and with the staff that we have. So thank you all.
So, thank you, Tom. We appreciate our staff. And so, thank you guys. So now we're to committee reports. And the first committee, of course, is going to be personnel. And this was the issue we talked about last time. We ended up, I thought we were going to have a shorter meeting and then when we got into this discussion, it turned out to be a longer meeting, which is good because it's a really serious discussion. So we're about to go into it again. But this is the discussion about part-time and how we compensate them and whether we're going to lay off people. The Personnel Committee met and Jean and Tom presented us with sort of their kind of compromise. And if I, if we can recall this kind of, one of the sticking issues was how do we have a staff that's going to be not getting paid, but is going to be on staff? And how does that work with morale? You have then other staff actually coming into the building and doing work and getting the same paid salary. What does that really look like? And on the other end of that, you had folks who thought we should just pay them, that we should be kind of gracious and considerate of the time we're in. It's a, you know, it's, there's no other time like that. And the thought that this might not go on forever. So, and if I'm describing this wrong, somebody jump in. And so, given that context, Jean and Tom presented compromise to us. And Tom, why don't you take it away? Unless, did I describe this well enough for you guys? I'm looking at you Chuck and Cory because we weren't on the same page. So did I, I want to make sure I give you guys justice. Yeah?
Yes.
Chuck, do you, do you want to, I mean, I'm happy to talk about it.
Sure.
But I think from your point of view, I would love to have you make a description and we can fill in.
I'm happy to. And if I, if I go astray anywhere, please, others feel free to chime in. So where we landed, I think the, one of the concerns that was expressed in our last meeting and that, you know, Tom expressed, that had been expressed by some of the, you know, staff, was if we went, if we went in a direction where we kept paying everybody kind of at a full rate and some people were coming in and some people weren't, that was going to present a serious challenge from a management point of view. You know, how do you, how do you sort of deal with that with people? And so where we ended up was we're going to continue paying as a floor, basically all of our part-timers at 50% of, you know, we had been using as a rate of pay sort of an, I think, an average of what they had been making over the last three months or hours they had been working over the last three months. So we'll use that as the starting point. We'll take 50% of it. We'll continue paying at minimum, everybody at 50% of that rate of pay, all part-time employees, whether they're coming in or not. And then if, and then if the part-time employee is coming in and they're working in excess of the hours that would be implied by that, you know, taking 50% of their last three months average, they'll get paid for whatever additional hours they're working in addition to that floor amount of compensation. So nobody will be working for hours that they're not getting paid for. And so the construct here is that we're going to continue to keep everybody on staff. We're not going to lay anybody off. We are going to, you know, reduce the kind of floor that we're paying everybody to be 50% of what we've been paying people. But people that are coming in will obviously get paid for the hours that they're working. So, you know, think about the 50% as a floor rather than a cap because if you're working more than that, you'll get paid for the hours that you work. You know, and our hope is...
For long, for long, Chuck.
So, it's a great question. So I think what we discussed was we would sort of, as a starting point, say 30 days and, you know, we'll revisit it. We'll revisit it. Like there's, as we all know, there's a lot of unknowns.
Yeah.
You know, in terms of timing of us being able to ramp up our operations, et cetera. And so, yeah, we aren't going to say we're going to do this in perpetuity. But, you know, we're not, I'd say that 30 days is sort of what we're going to look, we're going to look at it where it's not, I wouldn't say it's like a hard, we decided 30 days, done. But that's the guidance that we're giving at this point in time, based on what we know.
And also remember, in 30 days, we might see that we need them. You know, I don't think that'll happen. I don't think we'll be, but we might see that we need more staff. So it might become, it might become a more obvious thing in 30 days and might not.
We're hoping, Deidra, that we will be able to use more staff, our part-time staff. And I, we've had a dialogue that department heads and myself about, there are things in the library that absolutely need to be done, that we could use some of our part-time staff. For example, our adult services collections need to be looked at, need to be weeded, the material that's not circulating. We don't always have the time because we're so busy. And I'm reflecting that this might be a time where we can put somebody on a task like that or we can do special scanning of our amazing local history collection, our photographs, so we can digitize them and get them in. So we can give people legitimate things to do that will help the library and its mission going forward.
Are there other libraries, Tom, who are facing this kind of problem and how do they deal with it?
Quite frankly, you know, it's not been a topic, and you've been at the meetings, Francis, as well as myself. Early on, most of the libraries, not all, but many, were laying off their part-time staff. There were some that were saying, "We're going to keep you, but we need to keep you fully engaged while we're closed." And that was a real challenge to my colleagues because it was hard enough to keep their full-time staff engaged, never mind their part-time staff. So I think this board, which reflects on the comments that I made earlier about being so caring and thoughtful. It's doing something that, to my knowledge, is unusual in terms of trying to strike the balance between compassion and the ability for management to manage a library and keep morale up.
I'd love to hear from Whitney and Sarah because I think, because I think it's important that you kind of speak about this, if you're comfortable. I'd love to hear from you and Cory and Dan, but I know that we had a different, we were, we women, we're kind of aligned. So I would love to hear where you guys, what you think.
I think it's a really creative solution that you've come up with. I do wonder though, how do the employees feel about it?
Perfect. You know what? I brought this to the attention of the department heads and we really talked about it. And they thought it was fair. And I should say, first of all, that it was a solution that Jean and I had a conversation after the last board meeting where we talked it out. And it was, Jean has a, she has an ability in this area and we just went further and further. It was, we came up with this. But Jean was the leader in terms of working it through. The department heads really thought it was a fair solution. I also spoke to our job coach, who is an HR professional who's been involved for, you know, upwards of 30 years in this sort of work. And she thought it was creative and she thought it was fair. And again, the idea was it struck the balance between compassion for our part-time staff who would be struggling if we let them go, but also taking into account the fact that there are staff who are coming in and, you know, feeling, you know, maybe a little anxious about being in the building and facing the public. So knowing that their contributions are being honored the same way as staff who unfortunately couldn't come in, she thought that was a very reasonable solution.
How many staff members are in this category roughly? 10, 15?
No, oh no. Jean could give the exact number. But my sense is nearly 30.
Oh.
That's the number, 31.
31.
31, oh wow.
Thanks, Jean. Yep, quite a bit.
Yes, quite a bit.
Yeah, I'll just chime in and say I think I really appreciate the time that the Personnel Committee and Tom and the department heads and that, you know, everyone has put into making, you know, a solution that seems like a great compromise. And I love that it has a time, like every 30 days, you know, we have to look at what's going on. Maybe things are opening back up and more people can be engaged as we go forward. Maybe some people, I mean, I don't know if, how this is done, but, you know, I guess, I guess another option potentially could be asking if anyone wants to resign, you know, if they'd rather, you know, just be at home, they feel uncomfortable, they'd rather have that option. But apart from that, I think it's a great solution and...
The problem with that, Whitney, is, and I certainly am not an expert in unemployment law, but I don't know how the state of New York would react to someone who, you know...
Not quitting, how do you categorize it? Right, I get it.
And realistically, people can, people can, everybody, nobody's under, I mean, they can resign when they...
At-will employees, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, outside of that, I think it's, I think it seems like a really great solution. And if the staff is okay with it and feels that it's fair and feels comfortable with it, you know, I think it makes sense.
And it's a 30-day, and I think that's, it was a great idea from the Personnel Committee to attach a timeframe to it. And we can analyze it and, you know, maybe it's not necessary or maybe the threshold percentage is moved down to a lower number. I'm just, you know, riffing, maybe it's 25%, you know, as we engage our staff more, you know? Maybe it could work that way or not, I don't know. But it does give us flexibility and time.
Tom, when you talk to the staff, if you, can you tell them what has to happen for the situation to improve for them?
I'm sorry, I'm not certain.
Let me see if I can put my, what has to happen for this arrangement to be revoked?
Oh, I see.
Yeah, well, one solution, of course, is that after 30 days, if nothing happens and the situation is erased, okay, they go. There's another possibility that things could change and then we reverse to status quo pretty much, to get back their temporary job and so on. Is there something that has to happen for them to be taken back in?
It's a good question, Francis. And I think it really relates to where the Mid-Hudson region and Westchester in particular are relative to the phases that we are in. You know, and, you know, are we progressing? Are, is the county being moved further along towards a more open environment? If that's the case, then the library at some point will follow the lead of the governor and the phases and open our facility more, which means we may need more staff, which means that maybe this arrangement will be discontinued or altered. But I think it really relates to where we stand in terms of the phases and how open we are and how we decide to let people into the building to serve them, but keeping, meanwhile, keeping the staff and the residents who use the building safe.
And also demand.
It's a long answer.
Demand too.
Demand.
I think as, you know, as people are, you know, feeling braver, more courageous and hopefully still practicing everything to keep healthy and safe, but as people are venturing out more, there may be more and more people, you may need the staff as things are right now, you know?
Right. It's also uncertain, you know, it's a strange, strange time.
It is, it is.
So, Beth, we are discussing the layoffs, the layoff. And Tom and Jean have come up with just really a great compromise, which allows us to keep, to have a base rate for the part-time employees, to keep them on staff, but at 50% of what their rate is. And if they come in to work, they will then get paid for how much they would come in. Chuck, you want to explain it before I mess it up quickly?
Sounded good.
I think you've got it.
I think you have it.
Yep, okay. So if they come in, they would be paid on what that rate is. And the key here is that there's not, for those people that are coming in already, right, there's not this kind of lack of equity because some people are staying home and getting paid and not working. And some people are actually, some part-timers are actually coming in and working. In fact, all part, the part-timers that are not coming in, they're not getting, they will not be getting paid at the same rate as those that are coming in, unless they start coming in. So we're trying to kind of, like Chuck said, strike this balance so that we don't really have to let people go. We might need them soon. You know, we actually might start bringing in people and then we're going to need them. Also, Tom thinks he can shift and find other things for them to do. And we don't have to lay them off, but they will be getting paid less. So that's kind of their balance. Do you have any, do you have any questions?
So are we not, I'm sorry, so there's 31 employees? Is that what it is?
Part-time.
So this is just regarding part-time people?
Yes, correct, Beth.
And are, did we, not to open a can of worms, are we going back to them to see who actually does want to come back? Did I miss, did I miss that? Or we're just assuming everyone could come back?
At this point, all our part-time staff have indicated a desire to re-enter and... At, at this point, all our part time staff have indicated a desire to re-enter and to resume their work or different, they're willing to take on different tasks.
Got it. So if I were, worked 20 hours, you're saying I would come back to work 20 hours but have to pay, or I'm only coming back for 10 hours?
Right.
If you worked, if you were, your average that we had devised, which was the average of, of work in the previous three months, if you were, if you were being paid as a result of that formula, 20 hours, and technically, nobody's supposed to work more than 19 and a half hours, but if it were 20 hours, what we're saying, Beth, is that all part time employee, this part time employee will be paid at half of that, half of that 20 hour rate, which is 10 hours. However, if that part time person comes in to work four additional hours, they will have that base rate, that base wage of 10 hours, and they will pay, be paid four hours more. So it'll be a total of 14.
Got it. At their base rate.
At that, at that rate. The base rate, the base number of 50%, 10 hours plus four more hours. But they cannot work in excess of their, their, their regular average, which is the, which we determined for that hypothetical employee was 20 hours.
Okay, so just, so I understand, if they worked 19 and a half hours and they got paid $20 an hour, they're still getting paid to $20 an hour, but on less hours.
Right, yes, correct.
If they only come in 10 hours, they still get paid 20 times 10.
I, I'm not sure I heard you, but-
I'm sorry.
You're breaking up.
I'm sorry. Are, are we paying them at their $20, but just minimizing their hours coming in?
Right, they're getting the wage that they would make, yes. But it would be half of the hours they were being paid as part of the average.
Okay.
The current wage, as Jean is saying.
Okay, so what are we voting on if we want to do that? Or if what?
If we want to do that.
Versus what's the not doing?
Can you pass the motion? Can you read out the motion?
There's no, been no motion yet, I don't think.
I haven't done a motion yet.
If, Beth, if we don't do this, we would lay people off.
Got it. So something better than nothing, like that.
Yes.
Exactly.
And we revisit it in 30 days.
Okay, got it. Good.
So we do need a motion.
I'm going to do it, but wait, wait, Dan. Does anybody have any more questions? Let me just see if people have more questions. No? So Chuck, you want to make the motion?
Actually, sorry, I do have one question. And I had this question before. And maybe you said this and I missed it, but if, if we're revisiting in 30 days, that's approximate to the next board meeting, would there be another vote to make a change? Will there, what, is it that you're assessing in 30 days and you'll take action within a week after that?
I, I, I think, I think the way we were thinking about it was the next board meeting, we would discuss this and either vote to continue or not, or do something different or, I mean, I-
The assessment kind of happens here.
So there's no, yeah, Whitney, there's no set, this is going to happen in 30, in 30 days, we're going to have the same discussion. And we're going to say, is it working? Is it not working?
I just wasn't sure if there'd be like backend work on, on the part of the Personnel Committee and Tom.
Oh, yeah. I, I think the Personnel Committee will need to stay in touch on this. And as the situations, I mean, my view is, as, as the situation continues to evolve, we should, I, my hope would be, and I, I don't mean to speak for other members of the Personnel Committee, but, but we'll hope that we would come to the next meeting with a recommendation.
Yeah, that's what I was asking, was like, whoa.
And not on a recommendation, but also I think the financials of what, what actually was involved in, in the one month, what, what did the library spend on this, on this scheme?
Yeah, I think the only thing, well, yeah, we'll, I think we'll have to work with Jean and Tom on that and how much, you know, how much can be done on a real time basis? Because I know there's maybe-
Roughly, yeah. It might not be prohibitive, so it'll make it easier to, to renew or whatever. Or it could be excessive and then it'll make the board rethink.
Yep.
Chuck, could you make a motion, since you have the language about it? I guess I do, too.
I can try. I, I'd like to make a motion that we change the way that we are paying our part time employees to be, to reduce their, their current base rate of pay by 50%. I don't mean their hourly rate of pay, but that we're currently paying them based on the average of how much they worked over the last three months. And so we're going to take that 100% number and cut it in half. And then going forward, anybody that comes into work, we will pay them at minimum this floor that I just described, plus any hours that they work above that. But anybody that doesn't come to work will just receive this, this payment, which will be 50% of what they've been receiving for the last couple of months, which is based on the prior three months before we went into this closed situation. So that's the motion. Can I get a second?
I will second a very long motion.
All in favor?
Articulate.
Thank you. Yeah, that was a little bit of a tongue twister.
I don't know. I see when we said, yes, that, that, when the board approves a concept, we understand what the concept is.
Yes.
Chuck, Chuck, you can tie it up a little later, you know?
I am happy to do that.
Exactly.
Well, that was good. So now, now we have, we do have people actually here watching us, all eight of them. We welcome you to our meeting. And now we're going to go to our public comments. And we are going to time them, so Chuck has agreed. So we have two minutes. And if you want to speak, you have to raise your hand. Can you raise your hand? And I will. Let me see. Can they raise their hand? Jean, can you raise your hand? Just to kind of see if I'm doing this right.
Marjorie Sax is raising her hand.
Oh, yes. Marjorie, I'm going to let you talk. You're on.
It looks like she's on mute. Oh, no more.
Welcome, Marjorie. Marjorie? Okay, so did Mar, she left. All right. She left. Does anybody else want to, to speak?
Maybe there's a Wi-Fi, you know? Maybe it's her Wi-Fi.
Maybe we give it a minute.
Yeah, we'll give it a minute. I feel like somebody else raised their hand.
It was, it was Jean, I think.
Someone there. Here we go, hold on.
Jean's raising her hand. Go ahead, Jean. You have to unmute, Jean. I've unmuted you. Jean?
Looks like she's still muted.
I, I, I'm even asking her, would you like to, ask Jean if she's trying to speak?
He has no-
Laughing, no microphone.
Okay.
So Marjorie's back.
Marjorie is back.
Hold on, let's see.
Hey.
You want to give her access? There we go.
I did. She and Jean both have access. And I've asked her to unmute, unmute.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, I'll be brief. But first of all, I just, again, I just continue to be moved by all the work that's being done and by the, the, the arrangement you're working out with the part time staff. It just sounds great. And I do have one question about the hotspots. I think that, Tom, did you say, or Mr. Giuffino, did you say that 600, there are 600 families that don't have access?
Yes, Marjorie. When I had a conversation with our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Viejo, and she used the number 600, which is a considerable figure. Our resources cannot address that, unfortunately. But yes, that's the number I was told.
Okay, can I just ask, do you have a, a system in place for how you're going to decide who will get access to that if the, all the grants come through?
Our goal was to work with the New Rochelle School District to come up with some sort of equitable solution. It could be a lottery, I'm not quite sure. I'm waiting to have more conversations with Dr. Viejo about this. She, we've been kind of playing telephone tag. I think she's extraordinarily busy. But I'm hoping at some point, we, if we, certainly if we get the grant, then we need to come up with some sort of arrangement. And it would be an arrangement that I would also want the board to comment upon, at least informally.
Okay. Because it just seems like it'd be very difficult to figure out something that was equitable and, you know, I just, I wish the school district could be doing more. I mean, I really appreciate the library doing this. And, you know, I just think of all those children who aren't getting access to the schoolwork. But that's, that's a different, that's for a different meeting. So that, that was my question. And again, I just appreciate all the work that everybody's doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jean, did you have stuff you wanted to say? No? No, thank you. All right. Well, with that, I don't see anybody else raising their hand. So with that, I actually think we can adjourn. We can adjourn. So I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I, I see there's a thank you there on behalf of the part time. I think that's nice to know.
Thank you on behalf of our part time employees, from Kate Waters. You're welcome, Kate. Thank you.
I think that's nice to know.
Thanks for everything you're doing.
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
I was about to second your motion.
Let's stack it off, stay in the lane.
Whitney?
What's that?
I'm making my motion.
Yes, I do.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion adjourned and one last, motion adjourned, one last thing.
I'm staying, I'm staying.
Okay, okay.
I know.
We sometimes don't, do we always meet in July, Tom?
Yes.
Yes.
August, okay. So just so everybody remembers, we will meet in July. Sometimes we don't meet in August, but we can. So just to kind of-
I would like to thank on behalf of the staff, the, the thank you calls and other things that the board did in appreciation of staff during this time. It was truly lovely and much appreciated by the staff.
Very good.
It was, it was really a pleasure to talk to everybody. I got, I got fun people that I knew and a few I didn't. And it was actually nice, I talked to almost everybody. And Nicolette called me back, and so I got to talk to her, too. It was really, really nice. So thank you. It was, it was just nice to connect.
Lovely gesture.
Thank you.
We will see you next month. Be well, be safe. See ya.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Be healthy.